Welcome to the Schuylkill Township Board of Supervisors meetings for June 12th, 2024. I will start tonight's meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I am the United States of America, and consider the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, parole call we have on Zoom, Mark Donovan, myself, Bob Cooney, Martha Majeski, Daniel Juane, and John Callahan. We had executive sessions on May 23rd, June 11th, and June 12th to discuss potential property acquisition, potential litigation, and staff discussions. And tonight, we do not have any presentations. We're going to go right to the regular business meeting, the consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting from May 8th, 2024, and May 23rd, 2024, business meeting. All departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of May 31st, 2024. I'll make that motion. Wait here a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, treasures report and payment of bills, Lori.
Okay, for the period ending May 31st, 2024, we had a general fund balance of just over 6.4 million. We're up a couple hundred thousand over last month. We are right on track for this time of the year. Nothing really exciting to report, and all of the bills have been reviewed and are approved for payment.
All right, I'll make a motion we accept. Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of disbursements dated June 12th, 2024. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mark, you got about a three-second delay there. It's kind of funny, but keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move some items around on the agenda in the interest of time for this evening, so we'll be starting with the first and second items under new business. All right, everybody there? Okay, the first was accept resignation of Fire Police Captain Chris McKay of Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company effective May 3rd, 2024. Go ahead.
Chris McKay has moved out of the township, so he has resigned his position as captain of the fire police.
Good luck with wherever you're going, Chris. We appreciate your help. And I'll make a motion we accept that resignation. Wait here a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say that Chris was really an instrumental part in directing traffic when we did our litter pickups on the state roads that we did, and he did a really great job, and he'll be missed.
Any comments from the public? All right, I'll make that motion. Second. All in favor? All right. Okay, appointment of Marie Wickham as Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company Fire Police Captain effective June 12th, 2024. I'll turn that over to Lori.
Do your motion first.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Wait here a second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Again, I want to say that Maria actually helped out at our last litter pickup, and she did a fabulous job leading everyone, and welcome aboard. I think she's here. I saw her come in.
And for Maria and everybody that serves in the volunteer fire company, thank you. We do appreciate it. And do you want to say anything before I?
You should finish the motion first.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
All right. All right, Maria, you are in the hot seat now. So Bob, as vice chairman of the Board of Supervisors, will do your swearing in. If we could just go to the microphone so that Mark can hear you.
I'm Marie Wickham. I swear that I will uphold and support the Constitution and law of the country.
We appreciate your service and excited to have you onboard.
Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Station 68. The Constitutions and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the United States of America, and I will discharge the duties of fire police officer in Schuylkill Township, Chester County with
And did I finish that motion? Or were we?
fidelity, so help me God.
Yeah.
Okay, that's done. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, again, we're going to be doing a little reordering here with this section to begin with the Sedgley Farms. Mark Donovan, who is participating virtually, will be dropping off the call after this item, so in the essence of time, and to have Mark and Bob, we're going to bump that up and do that now, and I'm going to turn it over to Lori for an intro.
I am going to keep this as brief as possible, but I thought it might be beneficial to those Our two-copy system, so we don't have to go make a copy. here who might not have the benefit of the full history of this project, to just kind of do a little overview of where we are and how we've gotten here and the rules that the Board of Supervisors is bound to follow in a situation like this. So, starting back in 2007, so the 51-lot subdivision plan that's currently before the Board for a vote was first submitted to the township back in about 2007. The municipality's planning code, you'll hear the words MPC, that's the abbreviation for the municipality's planning code tonight. You're going to hear that thrown around a lot. That's the state law that guides, among other things, the subdivision of land development process in Pennsylvania. The township is obligated to comply with all aspects of the MPC. The township, in addition to that, can enact their own ordinances that govern development within its municipal boundaries, and Schuylkill has done that. We do have our own set of zoning ordinances, SALDO, all of that, but the township cannot conflict with or override state laws. The MPC requires that the township act on a subdivision application within 90 days of submission unless the applicant extends that deadline. In this case, because this was first submitted in 2007, as you heard, and it's 2024, the applicant has issued, they issued a series of deadline extensions when the project first came in. Ultimately, somewhere around 2008-ish, there was an indefinite extension put on it, so effectively, the plan was put on ice. However, under the law, it remained an active plan, so it was on hold, but it was an active plan in front of the township. So that is why the municipal ordinances that were in place at the time are governing this plan. So you've heard us talk a lot about current ordinance don't apply to the subdivision plan. That's because, under the law, when a plan is submitted, the ordinances that are in place at the time freeze. So we are required, the township is required to review this plan as if it's 2007. So no changes that have been made since 2007 can be applied to the plan. So a little history on what you've also heard about the PRD plans. You've heard that mentioned and thrown around a lot, too, and for those of you who haven't been around watching this process for the last 20 years, we'll give you a little history of that, too. So while the 51-lot was on hold, as I just said, the township enacted a planned residential development ordinance, a PRD. So that is a higher-density, greater-open-space type of development plan. So under the PRD ordinance, the applicant also made a series of submissions, and ultimately, two of those were voted on by the township in about 2019. Those are referred to as PRD-1 and PRD-2 commonly. PRD-1 was a cluster development, oh, I'm not supposed to say cluster, PRD, PRD-1 was a high-density development of about 94 lots with the bulk of the density on the south side, I'll call that the reservoir side, and a secondary access through East Philip Drive. The township denied the PRD-1 plan, and that denial was appealed, and the decision was upheld by the court. For that reason, PRD-1 is no longer an active plan. PRD-2 is also a higher-density development with 94 lots, but the bulk of the density on PRD-2 is on the north side, which I'll call the Dorchester Way, East Philip side. That plan also had a secondary access through East Philip Drive. The township also denied that plan. That was appealed, but that decision was overturned by the court. So in April of this year, the township's denial was overturned. The township has since appealed that decision, but effectively, that plan, under the law, is granted at this point. It's in appeal, but ultimately, that's the status of the plan, so it could technically be built. So, East Philip Drive, that 51-lot subdivision plan that was submitted in 2007 initially showed a secondary access through it on a 50-foot future road easement that was drawn on the original development plans for the East Philip Drive development, which is called the Blanchforkys subdivision. That was recorded in the early 1960s in the township. In about 2008, Pollock Builders purchased a property on East Philip Drive, and since about that time, the plans have been showing the connection to East Philip Drive exclusively through that property and not on the 1962 easement, I'll call it. So again, as I mentioned earlier, the controlling ordinances in this case are those that were in place in 2007. In 2019, the township enacted an ordinance that prohibits the breakthrough of a cul-de-sac, but that can't be applied here because that was not in place in 2007, so just a little context on that. So what are we doing tonight? So the MPC deadline, as we said, for a vote on the 51-lot subdivision plan will expire this Friday, so if no action is taken, it's deemed approved with no conditions, so the township has to take action on the plan by this Friday unless an extension is granted. The 51-lot subdivision that's before the Board this evening is for 48 new single-family homes and three existing homes that are already on the REITs tract. Those are the historic properties that are on the REITs tract. It contains two points of access, one via Sedgley Lane and a secondary connection to East Philip Drive with a private gated drive. So the Board of Supervisors has to make a decision on subdivision plans based on their compliance or ability to demonstrate compliance with the township's ordinances in accordance with the MPC, but the Board may impose reasonable conditions as part of a decision. The applicant tonight is seeking preliminary approval, and should preliminary approval be granted, the applicant is obligated to continue to work with the township through the final approval process, which has a whole different set of requirements. It's the end of my spiel.
All right, thank you, Lori. Okay, we've come to that time, consider preliminary plan development approval for Sedgley Farms' application. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, at this time, we'll open it up for board discussion. Go ahead. Danielle.
Hi, everybody. I want to first thank everybody for their engagement. The decisions that we make as board members are hard, and believe it or not, your contributions to the discourse do help us make a decision. What you will say tonight, what you said in prior meetings, do shape our thinking on the topics that become before us. I myself have been engaged in the proposed development of the REITs tract since moving back to the area in 2015, before I purchased my house, which was advertised as having beautiful views of open space. I did some research into public land records, contacted the township, and was made aware of the 51-unit development that had been pending since 2006 or '07. With that knowledge, I purchased my home, and that, two years later, became an active party in both PRD-1 and PRD-2, and since then, have followed all the twists and turns, including in leading up to the denial that we received in April. I ran for township supervisor because I wanted to make sure that land development applications are evaluated with the diligence that I think that they require. I have poured over legal memos for this case. I have reviewed court decisions, as we all have, and I think we've all given a lot of consideration to our vote tonight. Many of the people in this room signed my nominating petition for township supervisor. So our job is to balance the interest of all residents, and I want you to know that whatever the vote is for each of the individual supervisors tonight, it's not without a lot of thinking and a lot of work. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I second what Danielle just said.
Mark, anything you want to say? I'm not sure if you're there. Mark, can you hear us? You might have us on mute.
I just added him from another account, so.
All right, anything you want to say, John?
So, hi. Should come as no surprise to anyone, I'm the newest one on this board. I'm also one of the younger ones, but that doesn't change the fact that I'm very much involved in this. I've spent a lot of time bawling over this. I was here in meetings for the last year before I was even on the board. I have spent countless hours talking to Mark about this, as he's my neighbor, and so this is a very important topic to me, and I am someone who very much values open space, and that is something that is my first priority here, is to preserve that in every way possible that I can. However, in a lot of ways, my hands are tied on what I can do. I have to provide by the law. I can't just decide I run the township. So that, tonight, is what's guiding my decision, and I want you to know that everything I do is in the spirit of trying to preserve as much open space as possible.
All right, Mark, are you there? Did we lose you, Mark?
Let me try on this one.
We can hear you now.
Got you backed out.
Fantastic. Sorry, I'm like working with a setup that doesn't want to listen to me. Yeah, so I've been around for, going on seven years now. This has been going on since, well, before I started here. I know we've met countless times in planning commission meetings and board meetings, and I've met with many of our residents who either live on East Philip or live in Dorchester or live along the roadway, along the frontage there where Sedgley Lane's going to open up, and I know, like, at the end of the day, we're stuck with these 2007 ordinances. I've hated them from the day I got on this board. I've been trying, with the help of my colleagues here, to remedy some of the problems, but in, at the end of the day, some of them are just, we're stuck with them. And that includes, like, property rights, property rights issues for who has the right to do what, whether that means potential breaking of the cul-de-sac, which may or may not happen, or, you know, like, the number of units somebody can get on this lot because of the zoning at the time. I mean, it has been a long slog. I do not particularly honestly like this project, but at the end of the day, I mean, if I'm stuck with the laws we have, I think it's clear that we have no ability to, unfortunately, stop the breaking of this cul-de-sac. I don't believe that we want to try to push this through an appeals process, because if we go through appeals, we lose all control over anything to do with the project. It goes to a court, and judges get to decide, very, very property-friendly judges, and I think in the best interest of our residents, while it is not a desirable solution, I think we have to go with the best solution when we have two very undesirable projects on the table, both of which are potentially feasible. And I know some of my colleagues may or may not agree with me, but I will certainly vote in a way that reflects my understanding of the law, but also tries to minimize the impacts that we do see with some development of this property, as this property will not remain open space. It will be developed, and we have to kind of do the best with what we have here. So I apologize if that's not acceptable to some of you in advance. I will take any feedback you'd like to give, but I'm certain we will have people on both sides of this who are happy, sad, and quite disappointed or otherwise. Sorry to bring it down a little bit, but I believe we're kind of reaching that point, and this has been a very long journey with a lot of dissatisfactory outcomes.
Thanks, Mark. I'm not real good at shooting from the hip, so I jotted down some notes, and I'm a fourth-generation Schuylkill Township resident, grew up right across the street here, and my roots go deep with my great-grandfather building a lumberyard in Phoenixville many, many years ago, built a house on Ferry Lane right behind the G Lodge, and my grandfather and my mother, I lived there and survived the Depression, heard a lot of stories about it growing up. So I'm grateful my parents figured out a way to raise me in Schuylkill Township as well, and my kids grew up here. So that said, not only did I take an oath to do the right thing for the township, but it's in my DNA that I really want to see this township do everything in its power to defend the community. I know what it's like to sit in the audience and wonder why things are happening and feeling like you're not getting the full story. One of the drivers for me to run for office was to promote transparency, and I committed to do that. I can't find it within myself to compromise on the quality of life, along with the health and safety of our neighbors on East Philip. I personally see this plan, which includes the opening of their cul-de-sac, and again, this is me speaking for myself, I see it as a wrongful take. Forgive me, I lost my spot. I can't support a plan that I feel is contributing to something which could have a very negative impact on the health and safety of not only them, but our entire community, as well as the new residents that will be using that cul-de-sac as a throughway. Keep in mind, East Philip was designed as a residential street with a cul-de-sac. The children play in that cul-de-sac. They can safely walk up and down their street because there's no through traffic. There are no sidewalks. Streets designed like this in that time, but, you know, it's not a throughway, so it wasn't designed with sidewalks. They currently have on-street parking, but that street is not wide enough as a street that is designed as a throughway, or to be used to connect two streets together. That neighborhood will change dramatically if it gets converted into a throughway. Our traffic engineer made it clear to us that converting East Philip to a cut-through is not a good idea, and that East Philip is not designed for that use. When increased traffic at the intersection of East Philip and Whitehorse, we will be creating a dangerous situation with a risk of increased crashes. In addition, he did a study showing that the 85th percentile of traffic for the speed of the cars coming across the hill, traveling north on Whitehorse, as they approach East Philip, and it turns out, that's already a very risky intersection. We should put a sign up there now for the people that are already trying to exit and live there. Knowingly deciding to make that even more dangerous, in my opinion, is completely irresponsible, and I won't do it. I believe we have it clearly spelled out in our ordinances, as I read them, what the definition of a private driveway is, and that's what the connection from East Philip to Sedgley Farm, which connects two roads together, is being called. I don't believe that is a private driveway. That is a connection to a development, not a private drive connecting to East Philip. As I read the ordinance, it's clearly a connection street, and in my opinion, it doesn't meet the requirements of our ordinances. I also feel that we have it within our rights to say no, that you may not use East Philip, and that we have solid ground to stand on with that. I've repeatedly asked to see case histories or case law where a longstanding bulbed cul-de-sac of this type has been open to be used as a throughway, and nobody can find any. I mean, I've asked repeatedly, saying, "Show me where this has been done to open a cul-de-sac." And, you know, I hear it's done all the time, but nobody can seem to find where it's been done. So when I look at what's being proposed here, I cringe. I feel it's important to track things, sometimes to say, "How did we get to where we are?" And honestly, I believe the township dropped the ball about 10 years ago when that PRD was created. It's my understanding that the developer's lawyer actually crafted that ordinance. For us, along with that, there was a zoning map that showed a new overlay of the zoning, and attached was a potential plan for what that high-density development was called. I think it was a sketch plan for Plan J, which was an example of what could be put on there. That package was delivered to our team to review and approve. In my opinion, that process and the documents that were created significantly altered the ability to defend ourselves, because East Philip was included in Plan J, as Lori said, and the zoning changes clearly showed what the intention was for the Selectites' property and Sedgley Farm having access to East Philip as a throughway. Shame on us. We dropped the ball. We did something that I feel was a major error. Bravo to their lawyer. Brilliant job. He created and sold a bill of goods to us with that proposed package, and the township team in place at the time bought it, and we're stuck with it. Please keep in mind that most of us here, we're not on that team. We've come a long after, and we've done a lot of damage control to try to figure out how we can work through this. I remember when that zoning ordinance was going through, I sat where you guys are, and I sat in the audience, and I screamed and yelled and got up to the mic repeatedly, but I felt like it was following on deaf ears, and the ordinance was created and accepted anyway. I felt strongly that the creation of the plan, along with the related zoning changes, had significant benefit to the developer at the detriment of the community, and I didn't think that was okay. I don't think you change zoning to fit somebody to make more money and say, "We're going to take your rights, but we're going to give them to him." I was furious about that, and I'm still not happy about it. Our current traffic engineer has also made it clear that this development could be built using only the access that it does currently have to Route 23 without having to breach East Philip. I realize that that might irritate some of the people on the other surrounding communities, but I'm sorry. It's my opinion the right thing to do, that it's the right thing to do, and if I'm not mistaken, the developer himself has said multiple times that he could still build this development if he only had the existing access to 23. And I know, at least in one meeting, he said, "But for marketing reasons." He wanted to also have the access to the East Philip cul-de-sac, which, to me, doesn't constitute a hardship. I see that as a want. It's on the best-case wishlist, but it's not an absolute requirement. I don't consider that a hardship. I think that's excessive to open that up. One of the big concerns with any board when voting on a plan is that you must be fair and reasonable, but I feel that cuts both ways. Both sides need to take things into consideration and be fair and reasonable, especially regarding health and safety. We're knowingly doing something that could compromise people's lives. Shame on both of us for letting that happen. If we're not fair and reasonable, we could open ourselves up to litigation, and litigation is always a concern. That said, to me, health and safety is not something you compromise on. What is the value of a human life? What happens if somebody gets disabled? You're going to have litigation, because we allowed it. Shame on us, especially if a child could get caught in the crosshairs based on our bad decisions. The threat of litigation is not a good enough reason to motivate me to do the wrong thing and put our people's health and safety in jeopardy. In the end, I took an oath when I joined this board that I would do what I believe is in the best interest of this township and protect the rights, the health, and the safety of our residents, as well as anyone traveling through the township. To me, this is paramount. I will not compromise on that. I think health and safety trumps everything. We learned it in the PRD-1. When it got to the judge at the state, they said, "Ordinances, schmordinances, this isn't safe." So it matters. It's not just about, you know, reading this word and that word. Sometimes, it's just about common sense. You don't put people in the crosshairs of a dangerous situation. So I will not compromise on that. Both sides need to take things into consideration and be fair and reasonable, especially regarding health and safety. We're knowingly doing something that could compromise people's lives. Shame on both of us for letting that happen. If we're not fair and reasonable, we could open ourselves up to litigation and litigation is always a concern. That said, to me, health and safety is not something you compromise on. What is the value of a human life? What happens if somebody gets disabled? You're going to have litigation because we allowed it. Shame on us. Especially if a child could get caught in the crosshairs based on our bad decisions. The threat of litigation is not a good enough reason to motivate me to do the wrong thing and put our people's health and safety in jeopardy. In the end, I took an oath when I joined this board that I would do what I believe is in the best interest of this township and protect the rights, the health and the safety of our residents, as well as anyone traveling through the township. To me, this is paramount. I will not compromise on that. I think health and safety trumps everything. We learned it in the PRD I, when it got to the judge at the state, they said, "Ordinance is schmordinous, this isn't safe." So it matters. It's not just about, you know, reading this word and that word. Sometimes it's just about common sense. You don't put people in the crosshairs of a dangerous situation. So I will not compromise on that and I hope that my boardmates take this into consideration when casting their vote on this proposed plan. If it can be done without using East Philip, I honestly don't have a problem with it. Every developer, every landowner has rights. I want to be fair and reasonable, but I think that's crossing the line to take that cul-de-sac and open it up and turn it into a throughway. There are no sidewalks, there's children on it. Every other street around that is designed properly. That one's designed to be what it is. To change it, to me, is not okay. That's it for me. Thank you. Any other discussion from the board? All right, with that, we'll open it up to public comment. We ask that you please try to keep your comments to three or four minutes and if you can't collect your thoughts, so you can come up just one time because we're likely to have a good bit of comments, so. Would anybody like to step up and say anything? Yes?
Suzanne Rocky, formerly from East Philip Drive on 160 Diamond Rock Road. The first thing I want to say, well, I have been a resident of Schuylkill Township since '64. That's when my parents, well, '63, that's when they bought their lot on East Philip Drive and built the house. And I love East Philip Drive. It was a beautiful place to grow up with, especially because we were right in the cul-de-sac. Lori, I'm sorry, but I think that you misspoke because there was a saldo to protect cul-de-sacs and I think that was instituted in 1964 and probably Jim Morrison could back me up on that because he sent me the initial printout for the saldo, which says it cannot be broken and made into a through road or a crossroad or a four-way intersection. On our deeds, yeah, on our deeds, it said a future road. It was kind of like dotted in. And the fact is that I think the Voorhees, who originally owned the property, may have wanted to extend the cul-de-sac a little bit further and so they kind of left that open, but that easement was never confirmed. It was never deeded and recorded and agreed upon by, it has to be by all the sides. It wasn't a giver and a taker. And for an easement to be official, it has to be presented and accepted and then recorded. So that never happened. We went to three different law firms and they all said that it never hap, there is no easement. That was just a paper road, which doesn't count as an official road that you can break through. East Philip Drive was presented to the township in 1964 as a permanent cul-de-sac and it was accepted. So in 1964, it became a permanent cul-de-sac, so you can't break through that. Everyone that's purchased a property, and actually, all the residents lived there until the last four or five years where they either died or went to nursing homes or, you know, something happened. That's how popular that residence was, that road was. It was unloved. So I can give you two examples of builders trying to break through a cul-de-sac. One was on Sandra Lane in, gosh, I can't remember the development, but it's off of Pot House Road. Sandra Lane. The builder was Polty and he, they built Pickering Glen and actually wanted an access through Sandra Lane and that was denied. And so they had to reconfigure their development to become a horseshoe with two entrances onto Pot House Road. The other one was Flintlock Lane where the Christian Conference wanted access through Flintlock Lane to get to Ferry Lane. They just wanted to have another access point. And that was denied and that went through litigation and it was found that they could not break through Flintlock Lane. So those are two examples where it didn't happen. As Bob said, initially, they didn't want to have two accesses and they said, "Oh, gosh, we're not going to go through East Philip Drive. We don't need it." And then through different meetings, it was substantiated by the chief of police and the fire marshal that it wasn't necessary to have two accesses. And the whole point is that even with this new development, the majority of the residents, about 35 of them, will be with only one access if there is an emergency, which is how this whole thing about, "Well, we need two because in case of emergencies." And first, it was going to be a fire lane and I just said, you know, "Once you open that up, even as a fire lane, it's going to become a road." And that's where we are today. But the fire marshal and the police chief said that wasn't necessary. And even Mr. Polig said that the reason he wanted to open East Philip Drive was it was a better marketing tool because then people could have two ways to get in and out and they wouldn't have to wait for the traffic on 23. That's not a good reason to ruin a whole community and devalue those people's property and jeopardize the lives and make it a throughway. And as Bob said too, when you come to the stop sign, that hill, that grade, it's so dangerous that when I was living there, I got the finger several times because I tried to look both ways and the car would be coming really quick up the hill that I never saw and as I'm pulling out. So it's dangerous as it is, to add a throughway would be suicide, I think. So basically, we're depending on you. I don't understand how we got this far because there was a saldo in place. It said you cannot break through unless the board decides that it was needed, but it has to be, it can't be because of, excuse me, convenience or monetary reasons. That's not a good enough reason to ruin a community. So that's why.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Ellen Johnson, 15 Galway Lane. So I really appreciated all your comments, I think we all did. And to reiterate two important words that Mr. Cooney said, "Health and safety." There is no positive impact in the community, the local community, or the entire township. It's all negative for health and safety. And the health, everything from worrying about safety to the water pollution, which people know I've spoken about before, the chemical runoff, herbicides, pesticides, all the asphalt runoff, all of that. I don't know what the Aqua report was, but maybe that will be talked about later. The noise, air pollution, traffic, even if it's, no matter what the entryways are, which is sad. And the development versus open space issue, if this had been able to be purchased by the township way back, it would have been great, but the only reason not to have it is open space is greed by developers or developer. And that's what I have to say. Just greed is the only object. It's not caring about the people or the future of our township or the young people in it. I look at the young people in my neighborhood every day and think they have no voice. And then they'll be left with this mess that we've all created or allowed to be created.
Thanks, Ellen.
Ray McKnight, 20 Bantry Lane, Phoenixville, Pennsylvania. I just want to ask you all, have you driven on East Philip and West Philip and tried to get out? How difficult that is? It's horrible. It's horrible. It's so dangerous. So if you approve this, just think of all the lives you're putting in jeopardy. I just can't believe that it would come to this because of that dangerous intersection. Please, think of the future. Do you do that? And Mr. Polig said that people there, they won't get deliveries from Amazon. No, in their bracket, their income bracket, they get all the deliveries. So you're just increasing traffic in that area. In addition, if those people move in there, please keep, please keep it in mind, just it's horrible just now as it is to get from East Philip to West Philip. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Claudia Kiernan, 35 Wesley Lane. I do appreciate hearing from all of you. There's a couple of things I want to address. So what I heard you say tonight, Bob, is the PRD ordinance was enacted specifically, or maybe you said it, I think Lori, you did, PRD ordinance was enacted specifically for the Reeves' property. We've never had a PRD ordinance prior to that, so it was specifically for the Reeves' property. And if I recall this correctly, that would be spot zoning. I don't think that's legal, so I think we have an issue with that. So with your concern about PRD II being in appeal and kind of indicating what I heard you say is...
I did not, I did not say that it was enacted specifically for the Reeves' tract.
Okay, well, that's what I heard, that's what I understood. And you had said that PRD II is in appeal, but you intimated that that is a done deal as of right now, but it's in appeal. It's a done deal, so if we don't approve this current plan, we're going to have the PRD to deal with, which, you know, some people may find worse. My personal concern and has always been, Mr. Polig, you know, we are not trying to stop you from developing the property. You do beautiful work. That's never at issue. What is at issue is East Philip Drive and the residents that live there. This development does not need the access, which I've heard Suzanne Rocky reference, I think you referenced, and I've been in all those meetings too, and I did hear Mr. Polig also say he doesn't need it. He'd like it. It's a convenience. But I also think, my understanding is, that in order to grant this, he has to produce or show hardship. There's no hardship there. That is something that he would like to make his development better or more marketable. So 48 new homes, plus three is 51. East Philip Drive has, what, maybe 16 homes on it? How many? 19 homes. I have, and you know, just as I mentioned before at last month's meeting, I was trying to find case law to protect this township and as Bob said, it's really difficult to find. But I did reach out to several attorneys. The attorneys that have been involved from day one with Polig, you know, Fox Rothschild, Clem, Mark Clem, Deal, Glenn Deal, and then I reached out to other ones in addition, just desperately trying to find what we can give you so that you can feel confident in making the right decision for this township. And it isn't to stop Polig, but it is to protect East Philip Drive. And what was communicated to me is that with that easement that Snyder has referred to, East Philip Drive was meant for those 19 homes. And the new attorneys that I have spoken to and the old attorneys already knew, how many homes are going to go in there? So that's 51 homes times two or three based on how many cars a household has. And every lawyer I spoke to said, "That is a stretch. That is, you know, that's beyond what was likely intended for that easement." And as you said, Suzanne Rocky, that easement was probably to extend the cul-de-sac further in the first place, but it had nothing to do with opening up a new road and introducing new traffic. That is reckless on all of your parts should you give permission to breach this cul-de-sac. Someone will get killed. If you're concerned about lawsuits, that'll be devastating. We have been beating this drum for years that it's not safe. He doesn't need it and maybe Mr. Polig will even work with us and say, "You know what? You're right. I'll back off." If he's asked. Maybe he'll do it. And then the other thing that's really concerning that I heard tonight is the PRD was written with our solicitor, Mr. Brennan, and Mr. Snyder together, but I just heard that Mr. Snyder actually wrote it. So obviously, he wrote it to the plan and he wrote it to benefit the developer and our attorney for our township gave the blessing and then said to you guys, "Go ahead and sign it." Or, well, you guys weren't even here, it's the other supervisors. And here we are. We are in it. I know that this is very difficult and I know the pressures. I know some of you have pressures outside, you know, in your own neighborhoods to make certain decisions because I've talked to some of those people. But you have to do the right thing for this township and for the safety of the residents. That's what's at risk here. And, you know, building, Mr. Polig, building his development and using the original entrance, he's welcome to do it, but to blow through these people's cul-de-sac and create gobsmore traffic down that road, you're just setting yourself up for a serious personal injury lawsuit that will come to this township and there may be several. So I hope that you please give this some thought and consider all of this very heavily. Thank you.
Bob, out of respect for Mark, who had heart surgery and is trying to hang on to be here for the vote, can we limit public comment to three minutes? If you need me to make a motion, I will make a motion.
You know, I think there's only a couple of people left and after 20 years, I hate to tell people, "Don't speak." So if you can, try to keep it for Mark's.
Sure. Tough act to follow. Thank you. I'm John Kiernan. I live at 35 Wesley Lane and I've been here from the first meeting at the Phoenixville Public Library 18 years ago and have followed along the whole way. And I appreciate, Bob, what you shared. I think it sort of encapsulated the concern, the frustration, and I think the deep worry that we have as residents. I'm just going to simplify it to a moral question. I think it's a moral issue question, it's a safety question, and I think it's a legacy question for all of you and for Mr. Polig as well. Because morally, altering that cul-de-sac, all the safety issues, you know, to think that a court overturned a decision when a traffic consultant advised against it is, you know, puzzling to me. But I think morally, it is right and wrong and it is wrong to break through that cul-de-sac. It's betrayal of your neighbors, your community members to do that, in my opinion. It's as simple as that. It doesn't need all the technical, you know, all that analysis. It's just wrong. Safety-wise, everybody's talked about that turn. I think it's probably one of the most dangerous points in the entire township. And it's not going to get safer with the growth of the area regionally. And there's a lot of people, it's a commuter road, I'm on it every day a few times and, you know, I'm concerned just driving. And, you know, I'm concerned just driving it without that turn, let alone to have to make that turn. And then as far as legacy, you're going to, you're going to, you know, just as the people that were not competent ten years ago on this board, or maybe mis, you know, mis, did some misguided things. I mean, you, you guys are all here and we appreciate your service. But at some point you won't be board members. But the legacy of this decision will remain forever and whatever downstream tragedies result from it. And I think the same applies to Mr. Pollak. I mean, he's, you know, he's, he's accomplished a lot. I'm not sure, you know, he's concerned with that, but his legacy will be attached to whatever really horrific consequences result. Because it is, it is an absolute safety issue there. And that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Devin Hager. I live at eight seventy-seven East Philip on the cul-de-sac. I just moved in four months ago. So I'm not going to say much, but I have a six-year-old and a four-year-old. And every morning, just about, you see my four-year-old run out in the cul-de-sac. And Oscar, who's two, comes out on his little mechanized vehicle. And Charlie often comes out too. And they meet in the middle of that cul-de-sac. And it just, you know, you got seven kids, twelve and under, on that cul-de-sac. I have two. Chris has one, Chris Berg, and Derek and Lisa have four. Got seven kids. So just think about that. I, I haven't been here a long time, obviously, but I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't come up and say something. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey there. I've stood here before. John Rosenfeld. I live on East Philip as well. Everybody said everything very eloquently. My purpose here isn't to repeat it because they said it better than I could, but I just want to show you another voice saying the same thing. So again, the new community sounds great and has absolutely zero need for this entrance. It will sell fine and live fine without it. Actually, probably smoother. But for all of us that purposely went out of our way to limit our housing search to houses on a cul-de-sac, you know, you make preferences when you buy a house. You pay extra for certain things. Well, living on a cul-de-sac is one of them because you don't want people driving through. How you guys can then come along and say it's fine to not make it a cul-de-sac, not only is that a safety issue at the intersection, safety issue for people on the street, it's terrible for the township. And I think you know this because along the way, a law was passed that you can't do this in the future. So that kind of proves that we know that it's not good. There's absolutely zero hurt to this new community by not allowing this. And that includes not allowing the gate method, which will also fail. There is no advantage whatsoever. No person is ever going to show up at that community to buy a house and say, why don't they have an entrance here? Sure, it looks good on Google Maps when you look from the top. It seems obvious. And I could see why someone would want to do it. I would too if I was scratching it out on a map. But there is no actual real need for it. The community will thrive with its main entrance to the main road. All you're doing is creating a humongous cut-through of constant traffic, non-stop. I mean, at rush hour, you can see Whitehorse right now is backed up, probably thirty to forty cars at some times with that traffic light in both of the two directions. So now our entire cul-de-sac is going to be backed up from Whitehorse to this gate. The entire road is just going to be parked cars sitting there waiting for the gate to open or waiting to cut the corner. And then you're going to have people looking on Google Maps trying to make this. It's going to send them through there because it doesn't know there's a gate. There's absolutely one hundred percent zero advantage to the new community, to the old community. But there is some terrible things that would happen if you do open this. Safety being one, community being another, future legends for, you know, for all of the people on the board and everybody that's dealt with this, there is absolutely no reason to do it. Zero. If you're concerned about something from a legal perspective, someone else can handle that at a different time. But I can't imagine that you guys would allow this to happen if you lived on that road. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll keep this brief. I've probably been to ninety percent of the meetings since two thousand and eighteen. So I spoke many times and I'm not going to reiterate. Mike Busia, eight forty-five East Philip. So I'm not going to reiterate everything I've gone through. But to clarify, you know, his children do play with the president of Pollak Homes's kid in the cul-de-sac currently. So I'll state that. Secondly, you know, we talked about seven kids. There's actually over twenty kids on East Philip Drive. Today, I had six girls at ten playing in my driveway in the street because it's safe. They all live in the township. And, you know, they're playing pickleball, basketball, soccer. That won't happen anymore. So with that said, we did, we signed a petition, which I think we delivered to the board. So we have all but one. I couldn't track them down. But what it says is, "Our properties were purchased for the desire for it to remain as such as a cul-de-sac. We as residents are vehemently concerned about the increased traffic on East Philip and the increased likelihood of accidents at the corner of East Philip, Whitehorse. The potential changes of the street characteristics, the residents' children's safety, destruction of wildlife habitat, and the overall degradation in the quality of life of our residents and their families is at risk." So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's a heck of a way to get to see some of my neighbors. I'm Lila Hayles. I live at seven eight seven West Phillips. And guess what? My living room window faces East Philip. I have seen near accidents, I can't tell you how many times. And you've probably seen me many times picking up the beer bottles and liquor bottles that people have thrown on my property. What really upsets me though is we are planning on putting a throughway where there's two bus stops without sidewalks. To me, that's, by the way, I'm a nurse, former nurse instructor. I've seen what it looks like when kids get hit by cars. Now we'll have a throughway and the gate will probably work sometimes. And we'll have all this traffic jam because during school hours, when the kids are coming in or leaving, and during traffic hours, it's blocked up. I've watched it for, I've been there since nineteen eighty. It's only gotten worse and worse and more worse. So people, as a registered nurse, I'm warning you, this is a dangerous situation. You do not want to put little kids at risk. Is it funny?
Oh, no, I'm crying because I'm so upset.
Okay. So God bless us all. I hope we make the right decision.
Hi, Amanda Petty, twenty-sixth Door Chester Way. I recognize strongly that there are a lot of children living in East Philip. There are children that live in this entire township. There are children that live on Door Chester Way and on Sedgley Lane. There's a lot. And this plan is not in my front yard. It's in my backyard. This would be a road one foot from my fence. And the road would be four feet tall in some places. So truck tires above my two-year-old and three-year-old's heads. I am, I understand all aspects of this. I build things for a living as well. This is a very difficult process. I am just asking the board, if you're considering Sedgley Lane to be the only entrance onto twenty-three, which is backups for miles and miles and miles as well, that you please strongly consider the smaller cartway, speed tables, all the things you can do to that entrance to make it equitable and fair to all the families who live on Sedgley Lane. They exist too. They might not be here. I might be the only one speaking for all of us, but we are equally as important. We all have children and this is our backyards. It's not our front yards. It's our backyards that this is affecting for us. Everything that we look out our windows every single day and see. So please consider the waivers for the smaller cartways and any traffic calming measures because that road is like, I don't know, four hundred feet long. I mean, they fly down it. And that's cars right next to my kids' playground. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to say? Go ahead, Jim. All right, we got somebody behind you. I'm sorry. One minute.
I'm sorry, I'm crying. Hi, I'm Morgan Weldane and I live at eighty-five South Way Horse Road. I'll get that together. So there are seventeen homes on East Philip. As Mike said, we have a petition. And really, really, we couldn't get one from the people who work for Pollak and own Pollak. So as people have stated, I had a feeling that they might not sign it. But I do see them enjoying walking on our as-of-now safe cul-de-sac. We bought our home at the corner of Whitehorse and East Philip in twenty eighteen. And since that time, we've seen six of the homes on East Philip purchased by families with children. One is recently within the last few weeks. Sorry, Tom. Sorry about that one. So that's like over, that's like over a third of our street has been turned over to families. Like you said, people live there, they want to stay. You know, people die or, or, you know, start to downsize and they leave our street. These families chose to live on, in Skookel Township and they chose to purchase their homes on East Philip. And one of the reasons that they wanted to purchase their home on East Philip was because they wanted to live on a cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sacs are extremely desirable, especially for families with children. They're safer and quieter because they have no through traffic. Anyone who drives on your street lives there unless they're lost. Kids can play outside more freely. We take walks, we ride bikes, scooters and skateboards. Studies show lower crime rates in cul-de-sacs as neighbors look out for each other's homes and notice unfamiliar cars or individuals. I know what cars all of my neighbors drive. We wave as they go by. We're the first house on the corner there. I know like what time people come home from work because I see them drive by my house all the time. And it also seems that Pollak is very aware of the desirability of cul-de-sacs since their stony old development in Berwyn is literally seventeen homes on a cul-de-sac, that if you look at it from above, it looks like East Philip Drive. Their other advertised development is Ivy Lane and that happens to be a cul-de-sac as well. And we can see from the plans that aren't here tonight, but their new neighborhood is literally three cul-de-sacs. So I don't expect a developer to care about me and my family. The archetype of the developer coming through, changing existing neighborhoods and putting up expensive homes and making money is nothing new. Like, I, I can't, I just think of Goonies and we all know who we are rooting against in that movie. I love my home. I love our neighborhood. I don't want to move. And I'm hoping that the township can find a way to protect us in our little corner of Skookel Township. And Mr. Pollak, I hate to do this, but like, I'm asking you, please withdraw this part of the plan. You don't need it. You're ruining our neighborhood.
Jim Morrison, a former supervisor. This needs a bit of a counter. So let me try to hit five or so points here. First one is there will be a development on the property primarily because there's, there is, it's highly unlikely that any individual or group of individuals would buy the property as is for, let's say fifteen million dollars. That's not the Philadelphia market. So if you're wishing, if one is wishing for a smaller situation, it doesn't seem to be in the cards in part because I haven't heard of any offers in that, in that direction. The, and the reason there will be this, this development is because our ordinances provide for it and state law supports it. Okay? So if it's not Mr. Pollak as a developer, it will be some other developer. The owners of the property want their money and they will essentially pay whoever will give it to them. So that's the first point. Only one entrance actually presents a greater safety issue for the proposed residence of, let's say, the fifty-one homes than two entrances. We've got, we've got a, almost a parking lot situation on Route twenty-three. During rush hour, there will be a concentrated, rush hours, I should say, a concentrated number of cars from the, from the proposed development, either trying to get out in a short period of time or trying to get back in in a short period of time at the end of the day, which promotes or encourages impatience and therefore accidents. So I would submit that the probability of accidents is much greater for one entrance than for two. Okay? Chester County Planning Commission has guidelines for developers and developments. And one, one of those guidelines is to basically recommend that if you have a home, you have a development, sorry, of, let's say, twenty, of, of greater than thirty homes, approximately thirty homes, it's, you're well advised to have two entrances. Now, Skookel Township has, for the most part, complied with that. Maybe just out of common sense, not necessarily being able to see what the Planning Commission has to say about it. But anyway, that's their guideline. All right, now, the, the PRD plan, as I, as far as I know, the first one had twenty-plus acres of open space. And I think this one probably has even more because of the, of the concentration, the greater concentration of units on the upper part of the property versus the lower part of the property. So let's say it's, it's twenty-two plus acres, for example. The fifty-one home plan maxim, which maximizes the number of single-family homeowners, given all the other restrictions of setbacks and all that, only has about an acre of open space. And that's because it's required by our ordinance. So you've got a real open space issue here in, in terms of the two proposals. Okay? The PRD two versus the, we'll call it the buy right, which is the fifty-one home proposal. Finally, on this access to East Philip, one of the things that I was happy to see, at least for, you know, if you've got to, got to take a bite out of the apple, you might as well do it right, which is, is the controlled gate concept. And if it's done properly, as I understand it, the, the residents of East Philip Drive and the residents of the proposed development will have joint access through this controlled gate. And they'll have some kind of a pass system. I'm not sure of the exact mechanics here. But the big point is it's, it's designed to prevent, and probably to the greatest extent you could think of, other people from trying to do, use East Philip Drive as a cut-through to avoid the light at Whitehorse and twenty-three. So that was a good thing to, to see relative to the, to the developer's proposal. I probably could come up with another five or so things, but these are the ones I thought of at the moment. And I thought you all should know it.
Anybody else? I see somebody that's itching to get up over here.
Hi, I'm Nate Kearns. I'm a homeowner on East Philip Drive. And I wasn't planning on saying anything, so I'll keep this brief. I just didn't want him to be the last word here. I mean, I really don't have anything else to add. I think everyone has summarized this really well. I just want to be another face. I've got a two-year-old that we run up and down the street all the time. We're one of the seventeen or twenty-plus kids on the street. We've, we've been there for about two years and we knew about all of this. But at the time, we loved the community so much and we wanted to just put our, our trust in you and hope that you guys would do the right thing when the time came. And so I guess the time's now. So, thank you.
My name's Bob Hale. I live at seven eight seven West Philip Drive. And as I've already told you, we look out at the intersection all the time. And it's not a, it is a very dangerous intersection. No doubt about it. There's been quite a few accidents on it and so on and so forth. Up until now, I don't know of any fatalities and I don't know of any children. But I think if you add to it, the, I hate to tell you, but your five points are pretty poor. You know, I could go over every one of them, but I don't want to bore everybody. I know you're, you're there. What you're basically making a decision on. I'm an engineer. I build things. I'm a project manager. There's times when you come in, in any project that you're doing where you have to say, what are the trade-offs? You've got an interesting trade-off here. People's lives, danger, all that, over a marketing ploy. Marketing advantage. Money versus lives. Money versus lives. That's your decision, people. Don't think it isn't. You can justify it any way you want. Multiple people can get out quicker with two exits. No kidding. That's really, but you're not talking about that many people. You know, some of the other stuff that you're, you're, you're talking about, you know, it's very simple. You have a very simple decision. Lives versus money. Because you can market it better with two exits as opposed to one. Thank you.
Steve Kearns, ten fifteen Brookwood Drive. And I'm also a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for the township. For the EAC, the most important document in this application is the Environmental Impact Assessment, or EIA, which is a requirement, as, as you, the board, know, it's a requirement of SALDO for any preliminary plan application of more than ten units. And although it's a requirement, it's also an opportunity for the applicant to demonstrate the benefits of his project and how it won't have any serious environmental impacts. there's three main parts to an environmental impact assessment. According to SALDO, the, the first is an inventory, environmental inventory, which identifies the resources on the site and quantifies them. The second is the main, the meat and potatoes of the report, which is the environmental assessment. And there, the, the proposed impacts of the project are identified and measures to avoid or minimize those impacts are, are discussed. And the third part is an alternatives analysis. And there, variations in the scope and the layout and the design of the project are considered, are presented and evaluated. And reasons why those alternatives were rejected are, are provided. Now, the environmental impact assessment for this project is deficient in all three of those sections. For the environmental inventory, let me see here. A number of important existing resources, such as wetlands, woodlands and wildlife habitat, are just inadequately identified. Let's talk about wetlands, for example. Although there is a wetland delineation that was done here and the wetland line is shown on the site plan drawings, SALDO, another section of SALDO, Section five nineteen C, requires that for the preliminary plan, the wetland delineation be reviewed and approved by the Corps of Engineers. And that hasn't been done yet. The location and nature of trees on the site are based on a site survey that was done about twenty years ago, so that's out of date. Surveys for threatened endangered species were also done, but they were also done about twenty years ago, fifteen to twenty years ago. So those just aren't adequate. In the assessment section, the descriptions are often vague, generic, assertions made without any supporting data for impacts to water quality, which is a hugely important consideration here since the project site is right adjacent to a, a public drinking water reservoir. Impacts on water quality are claimed to be minimal primarily because they're proposing a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot riparian buffer against, adjacent to the, to the reservoir. But unfortunately, they don't, the EIA or the, the plans don't identify what's allowed in the buffer or what's not allowed in the buffer. And if you look at the plans, you see a lot of disturbance and a lot of tree clearing within the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. Excuse me. And in fact, there's a, there's a, a few sentences in the EIA which essentially say something like, except for the disturbance we have to do in the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer to build this project, we're not proposing any disturbance. Well, that's pretty convenient. The other, the other things to protect water quality, as described in the EIA, are, again, general, generalities, such as we're going to implement BMPs or best management practices. And, and saying things like, we intend to comply with all local, state and federal requirements for stormwater management and wetland protection and floodplain protection. Well, just saying that is not the kind of rigorous analysis that the SALDO says should be in an environmental impact assessment. And there are still some unresolved issues regarding impacts to bald eagles on the site. The current guidelines by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service say that disturbance within six-hundred-and-sixty feet of a bald eagle nest shouldn't be allowed. In fact, if you look at this plan, they're proposing eight acres of disturbance within six-hundred-and-sixty feet, including eight houses, a road and a stormwater facility.
I'm going to interrupt you there. I'm, I'm sorry. This bald eagle survey, the no disturbance area is one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet. There is a three-hundred-and-thirty-foot and a six-hundred-and-sixty-foot buffer for general restrictions that are like during the breeding season. But there's not a no disturbance for six-hundred-and-sixty feet, it's only one-hundred-and-seventy-five. And I would like to clarify again, that's a totally voluntary, voluntary program. They don't even technically need to enter a permit for it, but I believe the applicant has offered that they will, or have applied for the hundred-dollar permit that is associated with that and that they will comply with all of the requirements of the program, despite the fact that they don't, they aren't required to.
Okay, under the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, which does what it says, it tries to protect bald and golden eagles. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Guidelines today talk about a six-hundred-and-sixty-foot no disturbance buffer. You're correct that, that in this particular case, they're only providing, well, you're not quite correct. There's a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot no disturbance buffer proposed. That's quite a bit different from the six-hundred-and-sixty feet. And in fact, there, there are, there's clearing and earth disturbance proposed as close as one-hundred-and-fifty feet to this active bald eagle's nest.
Sure, I just wanted to clarify that the guidelines state that the no disturbance area is less than sixty, so whether it's one-hundred-and-fifty or one-hundred-and-seventy-five, I mean, that's, that's still a much less than six-sixty. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear because it sounds like you're going down a path where you're not quite accurate. And I just wanted to bring us back to that.
All right, well, I was on, I was on a conference call with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and representatives of Polig. And we discussed this matter. And they were encouraging Polig, the developer, to, to apply for a permit, a general permit, which they would just have to fill out and sign, that wouldn't even be reviewed. But it would have certain restrictions on, on what can be done. Or if you can't meet those restrictions, you, you give them written explanations for why you can't. And they've agreed, Wayne Leighton agreed, that they would be, they would get this general permit. So I think at a minimum, at this stage in the game, in the preliminary plan stage, the township should require the applicant to get confirmation from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that their proposal, as, as shown, within one-hundred-and-fifty feet of the nest, is, is going to be adequate for, for protecting the eagles.
Thanks, Steve. We do got to, we're, move it on, but go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a couple more minutes, if I may.
Yeah, we, we're, yeah, let's wrap it up. Jump on it quick if you can, please.
All right, well, and the alternatives, according to SALDO, requires a consideration of a wide variety of things. But only one alternative has been reviewed here in this, in EIA. And that's the PRD that was presented, you know, talked about a couple of years ago, that has more units than, than is proposed currently and actually was rejected by the township. And I understand all the, all the appeals and all that stuff. But no, no, no alternative that had less units than is proposed was evaluated in the EIA. And I know that various different layouts have been brought up over the long history of this project. But those, those alternatives weren't reviewed in this EIA, which was the appropriate place to do it. They just haven't been reviewed. So basically, the EIA is incomplete, it's internally inconsistent, and at times it contradicts what's shown on the site plan drawings. It doesn't satisfy the purpose or objectives specified in SALDO for an EIA. And it doesn't provide the information the township needs to evaluate the environmental effects of this project on what is arguably one of the most, if not the most environmentally sensitive properties still undeveloped in Skookel Township. The applicant has also asked that a lot of information be deferred until final plan, but a lot of this information is needed now to make an informed decision. And the SALDO requires, requirement for an EIA is it, is for it to be completed now at the preliminary plan stage. And so it's for these reasons. And the other reasons that the EAC has stated in its eight, eight separate letters of comments to the board since October of 2022 that we recommend that this application be denied.
Thank you, Steve. All right, if there's nobody else that wants to speak, anybody else want to get up? All right, we've got one more. We've got twenty years, we've got to give these people a chance. It's their day in court. I'm not going to tell everybody, you know, we're not going to listen. I mean, I sat out there, so I know what it's like to, I'm sorry, I thought he was coming up to speak. If that's it, my apologies. And when we already had you up once, I can't, I can't bring you up again. Now, we can, I can talk to you afterwards if you'd like, but I think we've got to wrap it up at this point. Any other comments from the board?
I believe I have a, a few. I did take.
Oh, okay, now, if it has nothing to do with this, we'll bring something up later for you. This is all about this. Go ahead, Martha.
Yeah, I was taking some notes during this and I, I know that it's complicated, it's, it's all over the place. It's, it's been a very long process and I just wanted to make some clarifications, corrections and touch base on a couple of these things before we close out. Because I, I want it to be clear what we're, what we're talking about tonight. We are talking about a thing that is legal, not necessary, not necessarily moral. I, I sympathize with everything you guys have been saying about safety and everything else. But we are bound by the laws of Pennsylvania and our own ordinance, which in two thousand and seven, I must say, was lacking. And it has handcuffed us. We, we did not have a SALDO provision protecting cul-de-sacs until 2019. That's after I was elected and we were already in litigation on multiple PRD applications. And have, have been fighting tooth and nail against these projects for, at least since I started, if not longer. There is a gated access in these plans. If we, you know, if we end up in a court, that is not a guarantee anymore. It would potentially and probably become a fall-throughway. That is a, one of the many guiding points on my own personal decision tonight. And I, knowing a development is going to go through, I cannot, and, and knowing that in Pennsylvania, we have a property rights-first constitution where unless a township prohibits action specifically, those actions are gen, they must generally be allowed by the township if it does not violate state or federal laws. So, we can't just deny based on our feelings. We cannot deny based on anything but the laws in front of us. And, and while I feel strongly, again, that this is a terrible development for this specific place, our zoning permits to some degree, almost all of it, from two thousand and seven. Our zoning these days probably would not provide an access through East Philip. It probably would not allow for certain lengths of loop roads or, or things like that. But we do not have, we did not have those protections in place when our board froze those, froze those laws to discuss the PRD plan, which we ended up fighting against. I'm going to jump a little, a little tangential. I myself, I live on a, I live on a cut-through road. I, I know what it's like. There, there are good days and there are bad days. And I know exactly how that feels. We get three hundred or four hundred cars a day, I'm on Flintlock Lane. And I, I know what that's like. We have bad traffic coming onto Ferry, we have bad traffic coming off of Flintlock, people turning left off Flintlock. Have the same issues with sightlines during, during rush hour. I, I, I one-hundred percent get those concerns. But we are, again, if this was all just moral decisions, I'd be a deny, deny, deny all day. But looking at it from a legal perspective, and I do this for a full-time job these days, I work in zoning and planning. I do not see a path to denial for myself. We'll see what our, the rest of our board thinks. But I, I'm telling you my thoughts on this because I know there was some commentary that seemed to assume that we can just do what we want. We are not all-powerful. We are an elected board in a municipality. And we have overarching guidelines that your state legislators, honestly, and the federal government have put in place that, that put us on some rails. And we can lay some, some sidetracks, but we can't lay out a full new rail system to, to guide ourselves in the direction we want. So, I appreciate you listening to me here and taking these comments. I appreciate all of your comments. Thank you, everybody, for attending and making yourselves heard. It is, I'm, I'm happy you've all been involved. Many of your comments have been taken into consideration in, in many of the conditions that I know myself. I, I have proposed or, or my colleagues have proposed in potential, potential for a grant of a, of a development. And, and again, thank you for your time. I'll, I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments? I, I gotta, we got, we got to stop only because we, we made a rule, everybody coming up once.
I need. She needs to go to the microphone if she's going to talk.
Jump, jump to the SALDO, if you can pass the mic back.
I'm under the impression, I think Mark is, is not under the impression that there was a SALDO. And there was a SALDO, I think it was from nineteen sixty-four.
Suzanne, what you're referring to is the definition of a permanent cul-de-sac versus a temporary cul-de-sac. That's not the same thing as the ordinance that was put in place in 2019 that prevents cutting through a cul-de-sac. Those are definitions versus a prohibition.
But this was under the heading of a SALDO. I have the paperwork, it's out in the car.
Yeah, now, it, it, what, I think what Lori's talking about, and I agree, you're talking about the definitions of a permanent and temporary cul-de-sac. There isn't a prohibition, there isn't an ordinance that says you can't do it, it's just simply the definition.
Suzanne, we've gotten that from you before, we've, we've looked into it, I promise you. We've, we've gotten it and we have researched it, we've looked into it.
Okay, I, I have to read.
We know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, because it was under the SALDO and then it gave the definitions.
I know, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We've had comments. Take the vote, all in favor, say aye.
I just, I need clarification on what the motion is.
Oh, I'm sorry, we want to do the motion.
Yeah, the motion.
Yes, we need to restate the motion.
Do we need to restate it or amend it?
Go with, Martha has notes. I, I, the motion needs to be.
Yeah, I don't have it here.
The motion needs to be clarified.
Yeah, you guys, whoever's making the motion, clarify what it is, please.
I believe John made the motion. The consider to grant preliminary approval for Sedgley Farms 51 lot subdivision application subject to the conditions as outlined in the written decision dated June 12, 2024. John made the motion and I seconded it.
Okay, so that's clarifying the original motion.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, Mark, you came out under a post, I don't think you wanted to do that, your, your voice was delayed, I'm telling you.
My, my, I, hold on, my aye was for approval with conditions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along, applicants.
We have to do the, the motion, the waivers.
That's what I'm doing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Applicant is seeking preliminary approval as well as the following waivers for SALDO Section 502. How do I state this, do I need to read these five or just say that? I'll do them all at once.
Read them all, just read them all at once.
I'm gonna read them all at once, then we're gonna make a vote on which is approved or not. Okay. No, we're gonna do them all in one shot. Can you seek approval as well as the following waivers for waiver of SALDO Section 502C1C to allow for internal streets to, of 28 feet in width in Sedgley Lane, 24-foot width at length, width, forgive me. Waiver from SALDO Section 504B to exempt granite curbs and allow rolled concrete curbs. Waiver from SALDO Section 508B1 to allow setbacks from lot boundaries instead of easement, from easements. Waiver from Section 514D4A parentheses two to accept, to exempt from street tree width on Sedgley Lane and number five, waiver from SALDO Section 508A to allow reserved strips separating the Sedgley Lane right away from existing track boundaries. Do I have a motion of which may or may not be acceptable for you guys?
I'd like to make the motion to grant the waiver, number one, subject to the conditions as outlined in the written decision dated June 12, 2024, to deny waiver number two, to deny waiver number three, to grant waiver number four, and to grant waiver number five. I'll make that motion.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark's got an aye and I'll say nay. Okay. Sure, sure. The waivers were for the internal streets.
To grant waiver number one, to deny waiver number two, to deny waiver number three, to grant waiver number four, and to grant waiver number five.
Subject to the written decision.
Right.
I believe there was a six, is there, or did you remove that?
No, that was.
If, if you're reading the written discussion, waiver number four got pulled. So what we're voting on for waiver number four is five in the written decision. Four was withdrawn, so it skipped in the numbers.
If you're looking at the agenda, it's correct.
Yes, the agenda is correct, the written decision is off by one.
Okay. We have motion, we passed that already, and with that, I believe we are moving on, am I correct?
Unsigned copies of the decision will be placed in front, maybe we can take two minutes to allow the public to take them if they wish. All right, would you stay for a couple of minutes, we gotta get signed copies.
Do we want to take a, do we want to take a five-minute break while we do this? Because I could use a visit to the restroom. We're gonna adjourn for five minutes and we'll be back. Had some paperwork to do and bathroom breaks that were desperately needed, I speak for myself on that one. All right, where were we, Lori, we got the.
You're going to go back to zoning hearing board application 123 South White Horse.
All right. Okay, zoning hearing board application 123 White Horse Road, Township Engineer Paul, can you give us an update on that?
Yes, so this is for 123 South White Horse Road. And the applicant today is, is requesting two waivers from the stormwater management ordinance. The first being from Section 310 dot 15T, which will be to allow their proposed stormwater management basin to encroach within 50 feet of the top of the pond embankment. And the second is from Section 310 dash 25C13 to permit the stormwater management basin in the required setbacks. So just to provide the, the board some history on this project, they have been in front of the zoning hearing board two separate times, once in December of 2023 and once just in May of this past year. And they've gotten all the variances that they have requested have been granted. Additionally, they have submitted a stormwater management and grading permit application. It's going through some reviews. The letter is basically complete, they have prepared a, a design for their stormwater management facility. I have no more technical comments about that. And just to also note that the, and through the zoning hearing board, there was a request to put in a, like a filtration cartridge due to the proximity of the storm, which the applicant agreed to. So I just want to give you a little bit of history on this. The stormwater bat, management basin is located downstream of the pool. It's really the only logical place it could be located. The, the ordinance or the waivers that they're requesting is that the basin encroaches within the 50 feet to the top of the bank. It's about plus or minus 25 to 27 feet based on your measurements. And the other is that it's within some required setback. So just the, the way the property is situated, it, it's too close to a, one of the property lines. It's about, the basin's about 18 feet from a property line, as well as it's about 27 feet from the, the top of banks.
Questions? What's.
So would just be a motion on the, motion on the waivers?
Motion on the waivers, now do I hear a motion?
Just one question, and this was, this is the same, this is the same project that we opposed at the, the zoning hearing board.
We opposed it twice, I think. We went through the full hearings in each case. There were mitigating circumstances, it, it's a pond, not a lake. The, the distance was off by a couple of feet, I think. The disturbance, the law only applies if it's more than an acre of, I guess, the waterway, is that correct?
Yeah.
This was 1.1 acres, so there were a number of converging circumstances, I think, that led your zoning hearing board to grant this twice over our objection. But they, they've gone two steps down the road. The waivers are necessary to complete, to complete the application. I got a sense from sitting, sitting through two hearings that the waivers are, are not as significant as the zoning relief that they've already received.
So your recommendation is to?
I don't make a recommendation.
I'll make the motion that we accept these waivers.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zoning Hearing Board, 225 Valley Park Road, Lori.
255.
255, just Lexick, my bad.
Good night. 255 Valley Park Road is a zoning hearing board application. The applicant had put in a permit seeking to demolish the pool housing ground pool structure to corn cribs and barn on the property. The permit was denied for a variety of reasons. The applicant has filed an appeal to the zoning hearing board seeking to overturn the zoning officer's decision as it relates to the zoning officer's determination that the property is historic and as such, the applicant must follow different processes that they did not follow.
This does not require a motion or vote on our part?
It requires a motion only if the board chooses to oppose the zoning application.
I will make a motion to oppose it.
Second.
And I would have discretion if I understand what the jurisdictional requirements are because, you know, zoning and, zoning hearing board has no business in conditional uses. And this appeal should have gone to the, to the UCC board, but. So, so I have some wiggle room to, to take appropriate action when we figure out if, if they accept this jurisdictionally, correct?
Yes.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Zoning Hearing Board, 400 Valley Park Road, discussion, Lori.
So this was a zoning hearing board, a zoning hearing that took place a month or so ago. It's, this was an application for a resident who had constructed a carport in the front yard. Not in the proper place, so they constructed it in the front yard, were issued a zoning violation. They appealed to, they sought relief from the zoning hearing board to allow the carport to remain where it was. That relief was granted, that written decision has come in. This was an application that the township opposed, so the question now is, does the board want to appeal that decision or not appeal it?
Testimony was ambiguous in either direction about miscommunications concerning the construction and when it should start and when it shouldn't start. So it, it would, it would be a jumbled record on appeal.
And if we make no action, if we take no action, then?
The time will, Roger will be fine.
Okay, I, my vote would be to take no action.
I'll second that.
We don't need to.
You don't have to second, you don't have to second my non-motion.
So a consensus to take no action?
Yeah, so we don't need a vote in that case?
Nope.
Okay, new business. I'm sorry, consider approval of EAC, DCNR Pickering Preserve proposal, township manager, what do we have here?
Yes, so the EAC had come before the board last month, I think-ish, to present the proposal for a program that DCNR will fully fund to plant 500 trees at the Pickering Preserve. It's an effort in reforestation. There were some reservations at the time and some questions on maintenance and what the contract would entail. Since that meeting, EAC has helped us to get more information, we were able to talk directly to DCNR. All of our questions were answered and satisfied and we feel, we feel good about moving forward with the project. The only outstanding question is with respect to herbicide versus weed mats. DCNR will do either, but the weed mats, as they explained it, are plastic. So they tend to be hit by mowers and then you get plastic all over your parks. The EAC had recommended a one-time application of herbicide. However, DCNR explained to me that that was not, that's not actually the option that DCNR will, will afford. It's a one-time application each year for the first three years, so three times instead of one time. So that's the only question I have on the contract.
Is the EAC okay with that?
It has not been able to go back to the EAC because of the timing and if we don't do it now, then.
But we can leave that to discretion of the EAC as to whether they do the mats. We don't have to, I mean, do we have to dictate whether they use mats or herbicide?
Have to, unless you have a strong opinion.
Are they our mowers?
Not for the beginning, but eventually.
And are the mats permanent?
Yes.
I mean, my, I, my, one time a year of an application of herbicide would be my, my vote. I mean, depending, depending on what time of herbicide you can use them or not.
And I'll say that DCNR, similar to how I can never give anybody a recommendation on anything, but they couldn't tell me. But that is what they primarily do, is the herbicide.
So we'll all make a motion to approve that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Can I say great job, Karen?
Yes, well done.
She did a ton of work on that.
It's not, there's too many people.
Great job, Karen. We made one person happy tonight.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, new business. Items number one and two have already been handled, we'll go right to item number three. Consider approval of estimate from Horn Plumbing and Heating in an amount not to exceed $10,000 for water line work at 433 Paul Lehman Drive. Lori.
This is a convoluted and sort of complicated situation, but effectively there's a water leak at the curb stop at 433 Paul Lehman Drive. The curb stop is underneath large gabion baskets that the township road crew installed directly after the hurricane to stabilize the roadway because Paul Lehman Drive had fallen off essentially in a cliff.
This has nothing to do with the project that we've been doing at Paul Lehman?
No, this happened before the, yes, this was a result of the hurricane. Now, since then, the Paul Lehman Drive project has occurred and has helped to, you know, mitigate some of those issues that led to that. Of course, it isn't going to stand up to a hurricane, but yes. The, the property owner can't access the curb stop where the leak is because our gabion baskets are there. So Aqua has offered to move the water line. We have concerns with removing the gabion baskets due to not only cost of, of labor and cost of materials to remove them. It's a huge project, the road will be closed for a couple of days. But we would prefer not to have to figure out a new way to stabilize the roadway. So the solution that was proposed, Aqua offered to move the curb stop, connect a new, they'll install a new curb stop, a new tap at their expense. And then the township at our expense will pay to connect the customer's service from the curb stop.
Your question is why are we paying anything? The answer is that Aqua.
Your mic's still.
The question is why are we paying anything? The answer is Aqua advised the, the property owners that it was the township's fault that putting the gabion baskets in crushed the line. We can't determine that one way or the other, but if it is our fault, then we have to do everything. So this is a compromise not to exceed 10,000 to see if this problem can be worked out.
And it's a new homeowner, they didn't live there when we did these repairs, so it's.
So I'll make a motion.
Mutually beneficial solution.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve that, not to exceed 10,000 for water line work. Discussion further, all in favor?
I have, I have discussion.
I'm sorry.
So I just want to make sure, so the release is between us and the homeowners.
Property owners are saying they, once they get to 10,000, they will not complain that they had other damages or.
Perfect.
And we're not responsible for the new line either. If a new line doesn't work, they can't complain to us.
I just want to make sure we weren't indemnifying Aqua.
No. Nope.
Any other discussion? Going once, twice, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number four, authorize township manager to sign release and indemnification, indemnification agreement for 433 Paul Lehman Drive.
So that is precisely what Danielle just asked about. So this is, the homeowner will be signing a release prior to us doing the work. So we've not authorized the work yet until we get that release back for the reasons that Bill just said. We don't want any ongoing responsibility for the new water line.
I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number five, approval of Amanda Gross to the position of accounting officer effective May 21, '24 in accordance with the offer letter dated May 21, 2024, Lori.
So this is just a formality to approve the hiring of that position. It's not an appointment, it's just an approval of the, of my decision to hire the employee. She did start, she's doing great, she's, so she is our new accounting officer.
I'll make that motion for that approval. Any other discussion? All right, glad to see that spot filled and hear that she's working out well.
I got to meet her last week. She's great.
Okay, number six, approval.
Did I have to say all of those in favor?
Oh, all of those in favor, didn't I? All right, my bad, thank you. We would have had an open motion lingering. Okay, approval of conditioned, conditional offer for employment to Matthew DePaul to the position of road labor operator dates June 12, '24, Lori.
That should say dated, no matter how many times we look at this agenda.
Dated, yep, I read it, I saw, seen.
This is similar to the last item, this is just an approval for a conditional offer for us to make to a vacant position that we have in the road department that is part of a succession plan for future retirements.
Excellent. So I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have not met him yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, consideration. Okay, consideration, or consider approval to pay applicant number, application number two in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-six, thirty cents and pay application number three in the amount of twenty thousand four hundred and one dollars ninety-five cents for retainage to Lanai Electric.
So this is, these are the final payments for the traffic signal work that we did through the Green Light Go grant at the intersection down here at White Horse Valley Park Creek Road. The project is done. These are the final applications that we've submitted to the state for reimbursement.
I'll make a motion for that approval. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
One more question. Does this improve?
Microphone.
Jim Morrison, just a question, has the traffic at the intersection been improved because of this?
I think so.
And why is that?
All new equipment, all the radar equipment is replaced.
Does it fluctuate the signals depending on the day of the week and the time of the day?
I don't know that answer. They connected the loop. So the signals are all connected. Yeah.
With Route twenty-three loop or?
I'll have to, why don't you call us in the office and we'll get you the details?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, I will make that motion for approval. Do I hear a second?
No, we did that.
Did we? All right, never mind.
We just need to finish the, finish the vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
My bad. Okay. Consider approval for twenty-four, twenty-five guard crossing, or crossing guard service agreement in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents. Lori?
This is for the crossing guards that we participate in a cost share agreement with the Phoenixville area school district. We do it every year.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
How is that split determined? Is it a fifty-fifty?
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Consider release of the following infill EDUs township engineer.
Yes, the township has been contacted by four separate property owners requesting an EDU for their products, their properties. Eighty-eight Valley Ford Road, that is the chief property, they need an extra EDU for the, let's say, their regional office to discuss that discussion.
The Rossiter House.
Sorry. Yeah, so it's, it's the existing house, the historic house on their parcel. There's one for thirteen twenty-one State Road that, that's right near Phoenixville High School that presently has a on-lot system. I believe it's failing, so they're asking to connect. Six thirty-nine Patriot Lane, that's the, the big, or the, let's say, the existing home that's in the meadows. The whole community is on public sewer except for this, the, let's say, I assume it's the original house because everything was built around it.
Is this Tim's house? Lori? Which one?
Six thirty-nine Patriot Lane. But they have requested an EDU. And five oh five Valley Park Road, they already have an EDU, but they are looking to convert a, a building into a, I don't want to say an apartment, but for a, one of their children who has special needs. So the, they've requested an EDU, be their second on that, on that property. All of these projects are serviced, can be serviced by Valley Ford Sewer Authority. Valley Ford Sewer Authority has no issues with, with, with these. Just need the board supervisor's approval and the planning commission gave a recommendation at the previous meeting for all four approvals.
All right, I'll make a motion. We consider release of those EDUs. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consider approval of signal service quote in the amount of blank for Pot House Road and Charlestown Road Radar Detector and Controlled Replacement, Controller Replacement. Lori?
So we had some equipment fail at the intersection of Pot House and Charlestown Road. You might have noticed the light has gone out a couple of times in the last several weeks. So we've had our techs out there on multiple occasions. And the equipment unfortunately at this point needs to be either repaired or replaced. So you have two options. That's the reason it's blanked there right now. To replace the equipment, so both the radar detector and the controller, those are two separate things. It would be to repair it with refurbished units and no warranty. It would be eight thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. To purchase new equipment that comes with a five-year warranty and is in accordance with PennDOT specs, which everything has to be because of our permit, it would be twelve thousand three hundred and forty dollars. So.
Eighty-six forty-seven?
Yep.
Versus twelve thirty-four, or twelve three forty?
For new equipment with a five-year warranty, the refurbished, no warranty, eighty-six forty-seven.
All right, and so this is, this is the signal that we currently have the traffic study for Charlestown and Pot House?
Yes.
And so does any of, would, would any of the work that we would do if we were paying for the brand-new equipment be redundant if we, is that, was that going to be your question? But.
You talked to Chad about this, right?
Yeah.
We talked to our traffic engineer Chad Dixon at Bowman. He suggested that we fix it immediately because it's an emergency need and the improvements that we would be having aren't going to be anytime soon, just because of the grant application and the time it takes.
So the immediate fix is the eighty-six hundred?
Correct. Yeah, we could do that with refurbished units, but I don't, though I don't know necessarily that they're going to be replacing the exact equipment. And we could work that out. So what you could do is authorize me, because truthfully, I think it's a better option for us to do the new equipment with the warranty because we might not get the grant, we might not move forward with the project for whatever reason. We would at least have that equipment. I can talk to Chad about it, but I would see no reason why if we manage to do the repair or the intersection improvements in the next two years, which you just saw, you just authorized release of two pay applications for a twenty-seventeen Green Light Go grant. So I'm not, you know, I wouldn't hold my breath on how soon that improvement is going to happen. But you could authorize me in an amount not to exceed, and if Chad says to me, do the refurbished stuff because we're likely to get the money and we're likely to be able to, you know, replace, we'll be replacing that exact equipment, then I'll go with the refurbished. But we do, we do have to replace it immediately.
What is, what does the radar do? Is it for, is it detect like a police vehicle or what is, like, does it change the, like, what is the radar component?
That is what, that's how it knows that there's traffic at the intersection.
Okay, okay.
So it'll change the lights.
Okay, yeah.
And how long's the warranty?
Five years.
Five years?
So if we approve the amount for five years and we find out we don't need, if Chad says, hey, you know what, do the refurbished, we can shift gears down to that?
Yeah, if you just authorize me not to exceed.
All right. Twelve three forty.
Are you sure about that or do you need an amount a little?
I would, give me a little, yeah, I would give, give me a little bit of a buffer because unfortunately, because it is such a quick turnaround, I didn't get the written quote yet. So these are numbers that I got from our signal service guy.
Go ahead.
I make the motion to authorize Lori Gatz to, to expend an amount.
Oh, sorry. I make an, it's a long name.
Here you go.
I make.
Consider approval.
Oh, all right, I didn't realize it was written.
Not to exceed instead of quote.
Consider, it isn't quite reflect what we're doing.
A motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Lori Gatz to expend an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars to address the signal repair or replacement at the intersection of Pot House Road and Charlestown Road. Period.
I'll second.
Drafted on the fly.
All right. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolutions and ordinances, number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, Pot House Road and West Bridge Street, Charlestown Road intersection. Improvement, multiple modal transportation grant application. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
This looks really interesting.
Yeah, yes. So he was going to come and present this to you all tonight, but I told him maybe not. Maybe not the best night, yeah. But yeah, so this is, he had come and presented publicly a couple of months ago with some concept plans for which intersections we could seek grant funding. The public might remember, a couple of years ago, the township had started working on a traffic impact fee study, ordinance study. And ultimately, it was determined that that was not going to be viable for the township. It wasn't, wasn't really going to work out for us or be in our best interest. So this board decided to pivot and turn that into a regular traffic study and hire our traffic engineer to do some studies on individual intersections and pick out ones that we could realistically seek funding for and hopefully be successful to be able to do it, intersection improvements. So the board decided Pot House Road and West Bridge Street, Charlestown Road was the first one that we were going to try to target. This resolution is just, all you're voting on tonight is the resolution that simply allows us to apply for the grant funding.
Is this Green Light Go stuff?
It is a multi-
I'm sorry, is this Green Light Go stuff?
It's multimodal.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second, I'm pretty sure. Any more discussion?
I'm just, you have a second?
Yeah, she's seconding. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Two-minute reports. For liaisons, John, anything to report?
Unfortunately, I missed the EAC again and we'll also be missing the next one. So, probably left. In spirit, I apologize to the EAC. The schedules have not lined up, so probably for me.
Okay, Danielle. I'm sorry, yeah, Danielle.
I attended both the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission meeting this year, this, this year, this month and the, the planning, planning, Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee meeting this year, this, this month and the Planning Commission meeting this month. In all the excitement of our other agenda items, I did not bring my notes. I did have notes for both of those. For the Planning Commission, we did discuss the release of the EDUs that were just approved. There was a lengthy discussion about sheets and the presentation that the, the, the potential applicants for sheets made in front of the Planning Commission. A lot of neighbor comments on that. There was not, there, there was a presentation at the, the PRPC about potential organization of celebrations surrounding the, not the bicentennial, but the, what do they call it?
Quintennial, something like that.
Yes, and various events that will be going, taking place around Chester County in ways that municipalities can participate. We would have ample opportunity to discuss that if we wanted to, to participate in that. Otherwise, I don't recall anything that was particularly noteworthy.
Thank you, Morrison.
Okay, so I did attend the EAC meeting. And there was a lot to discuss, but there really weren't any decisions. Did hear from Steve this evening. I'm trying to think of, they talked about the DCNR project, which we voted on tonight. Oh, yeah, the biggest tree thing. We, but we haven't really decided how we're going to manage that. Or have we?
Kind of. We created an email, but.
Okay, so when that's decided, I think we'll talk about that then. But one of the things the EAC wants to do is have a competition with the residents in the township to see who has the largest tree. So, but we haven't decided exactly how that's going to be managed.
I'm out. No big trees.
No. My neighbor has a really big gigantic one. I want them to win. And.
A big tree that's eating my house. Maybe I can put some in.
Okay, the historical commission, they met with, they, they had a, an architect come who specializes in mid-century modern and modern houses. He lives in one, interdifferent township. And he, he talked a little bit about, you know, what Dorothy had already done and is going to be working with her regarding how to narrow that list down when we said that we could only give them about half a dozen homes. And he basically said that that's probably about all that there really are in the township.
Half a dozen?
That he, that he feels would be noteworthy, that fits the criteria for what the historical commission is looking for. So we should hear from him shortly. And one other thing I wanted to let you guys know. So I know last month we, we did the textile recycling event. And I told you guys I was going to send Patty Lynn, who is the Chester County Solid Waste Authority recycler or somebody rather for the Chester County Solid Waste Authority, with our final weights for all of that. And she actually called me and she was extremely impressed that we collected as much as we did. Now I'm thinking, this woman deals in tons of rubbish every day. And she was really impressed by our eight hundred pounds. And she wanted to know if the township would be interested in doing some sort of a pilot program for the county regarding textile recycling. And I was like, ah, okay, I'll, I'll talk about it with the board. But then she said to me, I want to take you to this place that we'll, that I'd like you to partner with. And it's in New Jersey and Lori has agreed to come with me next month to do a tour of this recycling facility. And I don't have any details. I don't know what this is going to look like, how much it's going to cost, if it's going to cost anything. If we get any money in return, I will get all those answers next month.
I want to go.
Okay.
We're carpooling. I'll send you the date.
Yes, July ninth.
That sounds, that sounds fun. If I can, if I can go, that sounds like interesting.
It's, it, 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 it looks like a really interesting program. But as soon as I get more information, I just wanted to let you guys know that Patty Lynn was just really, really excited about our event that we had. And even though it was only eight hundred pounds, she was really impressed by that. She said, you had two articles of clothing. And she said, that's a lot. So she wants us to do this pilot program for the county. So I said that I would look into it with her. And that's all I have.
It was more than two minutes, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll keep mine short. Hit or miss with getting together with the Open Space Commission as a whole. But I've been meeting with Tim, keeping up on what's going on and things are in good shape. They will have a meeting next week that I can't make. I fly out in the wee hours of the morning tomorrow for the next nine days. So if anybody does want to volunteer.
Are they meeting Monday?
I have them down for next Monday to meet. I haven't seen a confirmation, which they normally send out a little bit ahead of time. But I'm sorry, they're meeting on the twenty-fourth and I, I will be out of town. So.
Do you want to depend?
On the swap? Actually, I, I keep in touch with Tim pretty regularly on each of the projects.
June twenty-fourth?
If anybody wants to be there in person, they can.
I'm going to have my brother visit with us. And it depend, it just depends on his behavior.
I may be able to.
And I can go.
Yeah, we got a whole pack of people. That's awesome. I'll let Tim know we got a crew going. Like I said, I do keep in touch with each of the things that are happening electronically, so. Done deal. All right, Township Manager, Lori?
I'm going to keep this very brief and yield my time to Paul to, we had a, we had a walkthrough for the Route twenty-three sidewalk project. So we're moving along on that, but I'm going to let him talk about it. Not to steal his thunder.
No, that's, that's fine. So yes, so Lori, Valentine, and myself and Chris McClure from T and M, we did a walkthrough on the May twenty-ninth trying to take a inventory of what has changed existing features-wise, et cetera. Chris and I have picked up maybe two, three places where I think we need to get some additional survey to make sure that any of the improvements won't give any kind of negative impact to the existing homeowners. Additionally, I, I think I explained to the board that I, we had taken the original plans and put them into our letterhead and submitted it to PennDOT to flush through some comments. And we did get a letter back on May thirty-first and we do have, so PennDOT has some significant que- some, PennDOT has some significant que, concerns and items that they would like us to go through. Uh, Chris and I have gone through a bunch of them, a lot of them are like, will comply, but there are little ones that we have to try to engineer and work through. I haven't had an opportunity with, uh, the scheduling with the township recently to, to talk with Lori Valentin in detail, but we're hoping to do that very soon. Um, additionally, beyond that, uh, I wanted to inform the board that the infiltration test that we completed for the PRP plan over on Oakwood Lane and, um, uh, Davis Road, uh, the, uh, the results were favorable. Uh, so we are proceeding ahead with our plans, we're looking to have those prepared sometime in the next five to ten business days. Uh, I'm thinking it's gonna be sooner than that, though, so I'm happy with that. The plans, uh, the, as, as you're aware, the PRP plan revision was accepted by, uh, the DEP, so we're moving forward with that. And, and not to belabor anything else, but the township's MS4 renewal permit is due at the end of June. And I've, uh, Monica has been working in my office with, uh, Valentina and Lori to get some different information, and Nick. Uh, so we're getting that together, and I'm hopeful that, and again, uh, probably by mid-next week, I'll be able to give you the draft version of it, and you can look over it. It's, it's a lot of just checking boxes and stuff like that, it's more intimidating than, than challenging. Uh, but, uh, we're gonna go through that and get that in time, it's, it's due at the end of the month.
Okay. Tell you what. Yeah, let me, let me, it's gonna be about five minutes, I just gotta get through the police chief, then we're gonna hit it and then go back on that. Chief.
I'll keep it brief, awesome, following your lead, Lori. Um, you all have our monthly reports, if any questions or concerns, I'll, I'll address them now. Um, the only other thing we have coming up in the immediate future is on Thursday, the twentieth, from six to eight, cones for cop at the Township Building here, we have, uh, different rides for the kids, we have different displays coming in for our department and then the Police Department. And it should be a good night, it was pretty well-attended last year. That's all I have.
Excellent, what, what date was that again? I think I put it in here, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, it's Thursday night.
And what time was that?
Six to eight.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Uh, additional business. Discussion on agenda items for upcoming workshops. I've got one, unless somebody else wants to go first. So, based on the discussion tonight and the pleas we heard from the people, I, uh, I have serious concerns about the health and safety of East Philip, I think we need to start talking about how to put sidewalks in if they're willing to accept it, to improve the safety of that development. So, I want to put that out there to, uh, expand our sidewalk.
I just think it's, I think it's premature to do this because we don't even know what they're gonna build there right now, Bob. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't have conversations about sidewalks, but I don't think it's next month's meeting topic.
Again, I'm just thinking that if, uh, if they look like they're moving pretty quickly, projects like this don't move quickly, I'd like to sooner than later have a parallel course running to, uh, to do something to protect somebody from getting hurt there. So, if not this one, I think we need to look at it, put it on the radar for discussion sooner than later.
Um, the EAC is going to, um, I did forget this on my two-minute report. Um, they have their clean energy, um, like, to-do list, I guess, is the project list that, um, Jonathan has come together with. And he wants to do a presentation to the board, um, to help prioritize what we want to do. So, I know that that's, um, one thing that is on the list. Um, we talked earlier in the year, and then it kind of got dropped, um, a plastic bag ban. Um, are any other municipalities other than the Borough of Phoenixville in the PRPC doing one?
Um, let me, let me research that, and, um, I can come back. Um, if you'd like, for the, rather than have a full-blown discussion on it, I could, um, look into that and maybe just give a short report at the next meeting, so rather than have like a full discussion of an ordinance. The, the only topic, oh, sorry.
No, I, I was just wondering, do we want to continue with the plastic bag ban? Or, I mean, we dropped, was there a reason why we dropped it?
I think just everything else is going wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm still interested in it, but there's just been a lot of other things. The, the only thing I would suggest for the, um, for a, a future workshop would be a discussion of, um, you know, a, a review of our ordinances surrounding gas stations and, and drive-throughs. Not necessarily in light of current potential, um, projects, but, um, it's just raised an issue in my mind of whether we have, um, best, you know, sort of best ordinances in place for, for those kinds of uses.
So, my suggestion then would be, uh, we have the Clean Energy Transition Plan comments from the EAC tentatively planned for the July workshop. That will give the EAC some time to go through and refine their list and prepare, prepare for the meeting. For June, I had tentatively planned for the ordinance discussion as it relates to gas stations. So, we have that tentatively planned, I will add drive-throughs on there as well. Um, so if we have any other ordinances that we want to discuss at that meeting, that would be a good one that we can, any ordinances that we want to, that we want to look at, I think that that would be appropriate.
I have one I'd like to take off your list, um, we were thinking and talking about this, um, recurring problem about political signs. Uh, the Third Circuit Court of Appeals came down with a definitive, uh, decision about, in the last thirty days, uh, opening the door to, um, actually closing the door to any, any sort of limitation on political signs, number, size. Uh, you can have no limitations. Um, the only things you can deal with are if they block the view of, uh, traffic and cars, uh, if there's noise, or if there's light. There's one problem in it that they're not supposed to be in the right-of-way. Nobody knows where their right-of-way is, and if we say you can't put them in the right-of-way, we'll have Vinnie, uh, or whoever going out to check each one to see if it's in the right-of-way, so we have to determine how to deal with that. But, uh, uh, we'll send the decision around, it's pretty clear that, it's almost like Christmas decorations. If, if you're crazy enough to keep them up all year, you can. And there's no, uh, limitation on size and, um, number. We were trying to limit the number and the size, and that's just not gonna work.
And it, does this, does this apply just for political signs?
Yeah, just political, commercial is different. This is free speech versus commercial.
So, if I have a temporary sign about a an open house that I'm having at my business-
That, that stays the same.
It can be a gigantic thing.
No, no, it's still, it's still limited to the smaller signs, like the real estate signs, they have to be removed, and all that, all that's still in place. You know, this is just politics, so, okay.
The, um, the other thing is, um, yeah, I, I, I'm presuming the Third Circuit, uh, didn't, didn't divest anybody of private rights to, if you have a covenant, for example, or deed restriction, that's-
None of that was part of this case.
Okay, it's just the right, municipality to-
Right.
Okay.
Do we have to, is there anything in our ordinance that we need to change?
Well, yes, but it's not urgent, uh, I, I've talked to a couple of other solicitors, what they're gonna not worry about it, people complain and just say, well, we can't enforce that because of this case, and send them the case. So, we could clean it up, actually, to take out, uh, the provision that, that sort of indicates that they're the same as commercial, and, uh, you can't have more than two or three, I put a sentence in saying the, uh, limitations on commercial signs don't apply to political speech. Next question is, what is political speech?
But if we're advertising something else, wouldn't it make sense for us to do it at the same times?
We could throw it on.
To advert, to, to keep the cost down of advertising?
Sure. Alright, I'll, I'll put something together on it.
I mean, not necessarily.
No?
That, that's gonna, it'll make our costs go up. It's by letter, so, yeah.
Nothing is easy.
No.
Or cheap.
Alright, any other ideas for agenda items?
To, to go back to the plastic bag ban, do we want to expand that to not just be bags, but like, cover things like utensils as well? Anything, make it more encompassing?
I just put that out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, truly.
Discussion before was other things.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to, like, lose the rest of it in the spirit of going after bags specifically, make sure we're covering. What else should fall in that kind of that vein?
Yeah, I think that should be part of the discussions. I definitely think that should, I'm sorry, just turned my microphone on. I, I definitely think that should be part of the discussion, I just, just for conversation sake, I just mentioned the one thing.
Valentina has reminded me that we have something else for the June workshop as well, that slipped my mind. Um, we have somebody coming to present a potential idea for the Valley Forge Conference Center. That has picked up steam lately, we've been contacted by several potential buyers, it's on the market. So, someone is- Yeah, they don't own the property yet, they're coming to present to the board their idea and get your, take your temperature.
This is the Christian college, the, the Christian, I'm sorry, the University of Valley Forge Property.
Correct. Is, Valentina, is this the one proposing a wellness center?
Yes.
It's a wellness center.
Like a meditation wellness retreat.
An outdoor natural.
But around that, yes.
Get your Dharma dusted.
And get my Dharma dusted?
Alright, I'm not going near that.
That is a signal that we've been here too long.
I will put that in a minute.
Alright. It's permanent. Alright. Moving on, if there's no other ideas, let's get to announcements.
Well, Chief just made one about the-
Cones for cops coming, I wish I were here, I would definitely be there, but I won't be, I'll be doing cones with kids in Montana. Any other announcements? Okay, public comment.
I had more energy three hours ago, but-
Me too.
I think we're all there.
Okay, well, the, uh, Planning, uh, Commission meeting, we brought up, or I brought up-
Please say your name.
I'm sorry, Christina Rossi, South Woodhorse Road, twenty-four south. Um, I was concerned with the ordinance of the setback, the sheets coming in, and wanted to know if there was any more consideration given on the, that setback. And if we could have that on the agenda, I think you said something about some gas station, but I wanted to know if the workshop can have that on the agenda.
That's what we just talked about, it's scheduled for the June twenty-seventh workshop.
Yeah, so, I followed the process of the recommendation from one of the members that, what I needed to do to be on the agenda and to fa, to talk about the ordinance being changed. So, that, that's a real concern. Um, especially with the clustering of so many, um, dispensing gas, the two hundred feet just doesn't warrant so many, you know, that's fine for, again, to, you know, with four pumps when you have, but two hundred feet, like, we really need to look at that and consider that. Um, my counsel had some, um, reading material for me to disperse today. If you don't mind, I could give that out, if you could seriously, um, take a look at reading that, and especially the clustering pamphlet. Um, it's severely dangerous, it's, it's something that we, you know, it's not an inconvenience, it's, it's health and hazard situation. It's, you know, for all of us, but it's, thank you.
And Lori, do you want, um-
Give him one to mark?
Sure.
Sure, I'll pass them down.
Thank you. Do you mind? Do you have one more?
You have another one?
Thank you. Oh, one for Danielle.
I have one.
Oh, you do have one.
For me, I have one.
That's a mark.
Mark, he's getting it marked.
This one has Mark.
No, we, oh. Is, is it different?
Oh, the ninety-one.
Is it the same?
It's the same.
Yeah, but I'm gonna put a post-it on it.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. Okay. We'll make sure he gets one.
I'll get it.
Can we have, and let's see, just another one, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a master at home.
Oh, why, you want one?
Thank you.
Thank you. Since we're gonna be discussing, since we're gonna be discussing it at our June, uh, workshop meeting? No, right, June, June. Um, with the date of that, will you be attending that? Okay. Um, the date is June-
Twenty-seventh, June twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Morrison again. Um, some additional comments. First of all, you were talking about sidewalks in relationship to, to developments. As the author of the Grand Sidewalk Plan for Skuggles Township, uh, it was drawn up basically development-independent, it was, it was an attempt to connect one community to another. Um, and so, in the case of the, the development of the Reeves' property, um, there was some recognition that might happen, but it wasn't the driver behind, uh, the, the whole layout. Just, just let you know what the intent was there. Uh, question for our engineer on, on the, the sidewalk, uh, situation. Uh, are there any, uh, embankment, shall I say, hang-ups at the, at this point?
Do you mean grading embankments, like?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, there are, there are some concerns, because there are some, uh, retaining walls and steeper slopes in, and areas where we're gonna need to put the sidewalk in, the sidewalk will need a flat area, and if it's a steep embankment, to put that flat area, you're gonna have to put in some form of retaining wall, whether it's one foot, two foot, three foot, just to catch grade.
Are, are we getting support from the, the relevant homeowners on this?
I, I haven't had any discussions with any of the homeowners yet, and, and the, the plan itself that we were working off of had a lot of, to be installed and to be removed and things like that, it had, we need to put more effort into this to understand what are going to be legitimately the height of some of these walls.
Yeah, okay. On signs, uh, political speech. I would encourage you to consider, uh, signs that encourage, to, to, encourage you to prohibit to the extent it's possible legally, signs that, that promote violence. You, you might have a legal stand, might, might be on some good legal ground on that, I think. Yes. It's possible. Well, I'm, I'm not gonna give you examples, I'm just-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just, we're talking political signs now, and, and given the state of affairs, uh, and politically, it, it could happen. Think, think about it, think about it.
I'm not sure I understand, but I'll, I'll think about it, Jim.
Let's kill Biden signs.
Oh, well, I mean, you can't have any of that stuff, I mean, obviously, so.
Well, okay.
Alright, alright, here we go, down the rabbit hole, alright.
Yeah, yeah, good, good point. On plastic bags, um, as you may know, True Different has a ban on plastic bags, which affects the, the Gateway Shopping Center. Um, uh, so, I guess my question has to do with Phoenixville mainly. Are they waiting for us?
No, the Borough of Phoenix, the Borough of Phoenixville has one that goes into effect on January first.
Oh, okay, alright, so they're, they're ahead of us, mm, good, okay, alright. We can take a cue, that's it.
Hello, Sarah Sterling, eight-five-six Valley Forge Road, I was coming mostly to see what the agenda was going to be for the workshop, so I'm grateful to you, Danielle, and those of you to approve discussing the inconsistency in the ordinances, which I would just like to reiterate is not related to the current state of affairs, but was something that I had proposed as an issue way back in twenty-seventeen, so if that's helpful for discussion, um, just wanted to put that on the record. My question, more so, for tonight is, it feels like with the zoning hearing board, there has been a lot of circumstances in which they have been approving variances, um, and then you all have been not approving those, and it keeps going back and forth. And so, I know that there are many, some of the members of the zoning hearing board have- And so I know that there are many, some of the members of the zoning hearing board have been members of the zoning hearing board for a long time. And there are some term limits that are up at the end of this year. Since those are positions that are nominated and approved by you all, as we have elected you into these positions, I'm wondering when we get to a point in which some of the folks who are sitting on the zoning hearing board that are directly opposing the same decisions that you are making, that we have voted you in more recently, where it comes a time in which they are no longer members of the zoning hearing board, or what that process is for those of us residents who have concerns about the discrepancies between those decisions and your decisions. Cause we can't vote for them. We can only vote for you.
I am, because I can speak to that because we just implemented a new policy that we discussed at, uh, workshop meeting a while back on how to address just this issue, um, and how to make it more fair and equitable for residents to learn about vacancies and have an opportunity to volunteer. So, we implemented a new policy that anytime we have a vacancy or a term is coming up, that position will be advertised and any residents can apply. And then there's a small committee of interviewers that will interview each interested candidate, which includes those people who are currently serving on committees. So if their term is up, they have to interview for the position, just like everybody else would. So that's, that's the concept. We just started that, um, with the last round of vacancies, yeah.
Okay, so that has already, it's already been put into place then?
So if Sarah was interested in, in serving on the zoning hearing board, for example.
Yep.
She could periodically check our website and she would see. And she, and she, and she would see, because you can see how glamorous this all is. And she would periodically check our website and there, or would that, would those things be announced also on the, um, the, the listserv that we have?
Yes, we do. We do both, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And then you can apply.
Perfect. My last kind of comment or question is somewhat related to this as well. So, there is a period of time, and maybe Lori, you can probably help me with like the timing of this. So, there was a period of time in which we were using a different system for communicating between the township and residents. And I was getting all of the emails. This is dating back now to like twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. Then there was a very like black period, it felt like to me, where I wasn't receiving the things and I felt like I was signing up for them. So I know that we had switched systems. Um, is that true? And the reason why I'm asking this is because some of the changes in the code and ordinance that kind of happened during that period of time, um, I felt like I know that I personally was not aware of them happening. And so I didn't know if that was my own fault or because I, the system that usually sends me like the agendas and that sort of thing now that I'm clearly getting was not like accurately working.
Um, I'm, there was a change, uh, when we launched our new website. So that, for the new website, everybody had to re-sign up. Uh, that's how the agendas go out. I don't know if the agendas used to also go out in a different way, like if somebody was manually sending emails. We have been very staff limited and we, we do not, I will just say, we do not send a ton of emails out. What we do is blast things out through the website to people who are, who are subscribed. So if you're getting the agendas, then you're subscribed and that's what you're getting. Uh, we do have a separate MailChimp mailing list that we do periodically send things out, like we'll send out the vacancies via that. Um, we don't generally blast the agendas out also on that because they get sent out automatically through the website. So if you're on both, sign up for that, but I don't think that you're missing, I don't think you're missing much of anything, but I can't speak to what the blackout period was or what used to, what used to go out.
When did that website change? Do you remember?
About two years ago.
Okay.
A little less, right?
A little less than two.
Yeah, I thought it was.
It was near when I started coming in.
Yeah. Year and a half?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Last question.
Yeah.
And then, um, changes to code or ordinance, those are only occurring, conversation about those and announcements about those are only happening at the meetings? Or is those separate information that's sent out to residents?
Um, we have advertising requirements that we have to follow, so they get advertised in the way that the law says that we have to. But we are not email blasting out to residents when ordinance changes are happening. But I will tell you, we have not done very many ordinances recently.
Right, I know. I'm thinking back to a twenty-nineteen one that if I had been aware of, I probably would have had a lot of things to say about it.
So I have no idea.
So that's why I'm wondering if like how much I missed.
I can tell you it got advertised in the newspaper probably a minimum of twice and that, because we're required by law to do that.
Okay.
Whether or not it was email blasted out, I would gamble to say probably not because that's not, it's not standard practice.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I have one question, Lori. I would think if we do make order, I, I know this isn't quite, um, addressing Sarah's question, but if we were making a change to like, um, a gas station ordinance, for example, um, we'd probably wanna go through PRPC, right? The Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission, or? Typically we get consistency, consistency, typically we do a consistency review. Maybe that's something we could discuss.
Yeah, we can talk about that. I, I think the qualification is that it has to be like impactful to the wider, there are like certain criteria for, for it to meet. I don't know whether or not that would meet to go to PRPC, but it would definitely have to go to Chester County.
Just, just so you know Lori, any change that Phoenixville makes, even if they're changing the word "the."
They send it.
They send it.
Yeah.
I know we don't, but I know the borough sends everything to the PRPC. Because there, there was a meeting, I, I don't think you were able to attend the meeting. And I asked, why are we looking at this? This is a minor, minor change and it doesn't fit the criteria of what they're looking for. And, um, Rich had said they send everything.
Phoenixville might have their ordinances written that way. We do not.
Okay.
Alright, if they're, go ahead.
I have one question. She supplied in the borough way back, a couple of years back. I don't know if it was ever, do you know exactly where that location was? No, they were, it didn't go through. They were cited for many violations. They didn't follow the conditional use. And that time, I think they went under the gas station, um, variant ordinance. Here, there, they did the convenience store, but you don't know where that location was?
No.
I'm almost wondering if it was where that K-Mart's was.
I didn't even know that they applied.
Because it's across from Wawa and that's usually what they do is do the spatial competition marketing. That's how they, you don't know?
There is, uh, no more public comment. I hate to do it, but I think it's time, uh, to adjourn.
Yep.
Make that motion second and, hi. It's a wrap.